Good evening. Can you hear me if I leave this down here?
We have to get stressed out though.
Can you hear me right now?
Not very well.
Not very well. That was the problem on Monday, so we're gonna try to work on this. You know what? I have no problem holding this. So I'm gonna hold it like this. Good, that's important. My name, by the way, is Jane Anderson Callahan, and I am your moderator tonight. And we will make some preliminary comments for your benefit. And we're very pleased you're here. Hello and welcome. Before we go on camera, I would like to cover a few points that apply to all of us in the live audience. Campaign literature is welcome outside this room. We ask that no candidate buttons, T-shirts, signs, or literature be visible in this room during the forum. Please remain as quiet as possible while the candidates are speaking, so that everyone may hear. And please hold your applause until the forum has ended, so that the candidates will have all the time possible for getting their points across. We expect everyone to be respectful to all the candidates and the forum process. The Rochester Public Library is live streaming this forum. The forum is also being projected in Meeting Room C. Tonight's forum will also be available for viewing from a link on LWV Rochester's website. So if you have children like mine, they fly in from college, they're too old for that now, and they say, they go online and they watch everything, and then they make up their mind. So you know that that's there, and they can see that themselves, or any friend of yours who needs to see something. Thank you for coming tonight. Please take a moment at this time to turn off all electronic devices. I would also remind the candidates to hold the microphone very close without touching it. Thank you, everybody. In a few minutes, we will go on air. A few minutes is actually a few seconds. No time for that, thank you. So, shall we start? Hello, I am Jane Callahan, a member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I would like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing in later time, to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we, as a league, do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or oppose political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum, and the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from LWV Rochester, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and members of our audience. You are welcome to submit as many written questions for the candidates as you like. Just hold up the cards as you finish them, and a lead volunteer will collect them throughout the forum. If you are watching the live stream, you may email questions to lvwrochester@lwvmn.org. Tonight's volunteers who are managing the questions are also league volunteers. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Given our format, your questions must relate to all candidates. Questions that fall in the same general area or which have been addressed in opening statements may be consolidated to allow the moderator to cover as many topics as possible in the time allotted. We appreciate questions that are forward-looking rather than a review of past issues. If the answer was unclear to you, feel free to submit a follow-up question or to ask the candidate after the forum. Cards become the property of the League of Women Voters of Rochester. As there is never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time and setting such as this, please feel free to contact the candidate's campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not addressed tonight. We'd like to thank all candidates for running for office, for offering to serve their community, and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demands. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved with your community and the political party of your choice. Here we go. Welcome to tonight's forum, which features the candidates for School Board Member Position Number Five. The candidates for this seat are Capital A Period Mohammed, known as Chief in parentheses, Kim Rashavi, and Jean Marvin. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond and turn to questions provided by LWV Rochester, this evening's partners, and the audience. Candidates will have one minute to answer each of those questions. The candidates will then have two minutes each to make closing statements. I would like to suggest to candidates that you make your answers as succinct as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire minute for your answer, but please finish your sentence when your time is up. We would like to cover as many questions as possible. Each candidate also has thirty-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per question. Please put the card in the basket after you have used it, so you have three rebuttals, but not more, other than that closing one, I think. I would like to remind the audience to remain quiet during the forum, hold your applause until the end of the forum, and to turn off all electronic devices. The timekeeper tonight is LWV Rochester member April Horn. Thank you, April. Questions will be screened by LWV Rochester members Mary Jones, Kathy Magdalene, and Walt Rothwell. Asking questions will be Jordan Sheer from the Post Bulletin and Jonathan Crowe from the Chamber of Commerce. Candidates, we will begin with your two-minute opening statement, and in random order, Candidate Mohammed will begin.
Good afternoon and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is A. Mohammed, AKA Chief. I am pleased to announce that I am running election for the Director of Five at RPS. Reason I'm running. I'm employed by, first of all, Mayo Clinic, and I live this town more than eighteen years plus. And I, my roles as an employee of the clinic is in the technology engineering team, member of the technology engineering team. I am pleased to announce, as I believe our public schools are one of the greatest community assets, and must work together, we must work together, our children's need. What my strategy, and welcoming you here, develop a partnership between the Rochester Schools and industry, facilitate summer programs with high school students and middle school, and transition our middle school to a high school and a technology area. Bridge the gap amongst the schools, RPS, and best practices and other top schools in the state. Develop a parents' academy program to engage and empower parents as partners of their children's education. That is what I'm running, and I am also capable of doing a lot of things. I've passed the, I volunteer teaching students in a high school, like I volunteer at Centurion High School, teaching students such as programming classes, BDBA, programming classes, Java, Python, and a couple others. I also do construct and guide high school graduates to the university level and picking up a choice of financial aid assets, applications, and all of these. I believe there's a room for improvements, and this RBS needs those, and I do candidate for those.
Thank you. The next candidate to speak is Candidate Rashavi.
Hello, and thank you to the other two candidates in the League of Women Voters for having us here. I'm Kim Rashavi, and a little bit about myself is I was born and raised in Rochester. I went to the Rochester Public Schools, graduated from John Marshall, and I've been married for thirty-seven years to my husband Jerry. Tonight is our wedding anniversary, and I couldn't think of a better place to spend it than with our two. We have two adult children, and we have four grandchildren, and that's the reason that I'm running, is because of my grandchildren. All of my family, including a lot of relatives, actually graduated from John Marshall, and when I look at the school system today, I don't recognize it. There are such big differences from violence to academics, and the big thing that I just don't understand is, I'm just gonna say it, because it's the elephant in the room, why do we have to talk about color? Why do we have to talk about gender? Why do we have to talk about race? Aren't we all humans? We're all the same on the inside. What's the difference? What we look like on the outside. So that is one of my issues. Another one is the violence. It's very unacceptable. When one child is sent to an emergency room, that's one child too many. That never is going to happen again. When kids have to not go to the bathroom all day because they're afraid that they might get beat up in middle school, unacceptable. And the other thing is the budget. I'm a taxpayer, and I don't think that the taxpayers really appreciate, with a half-a-billion-dollar budget, there were twenty-three million in the hole. There's a lot that needs to be done, and it says stop.
Thank you for your opening statement. Next to speak is Candidate Marvin.
Thank you, and first, thank you to League of Women Voters, to the library, to the Post Bulletin, and to the Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this event. I'm running for reelection to Rochester School Board, because I believe that providing students with a quality of public education is the best investment a community can make. When children do better, our community does better. I was a secondary teacher in Rochester Public Schools for forty years. I've been teaching at the university level, where I teach teachers, for fifteen years. My three grown children are all products of Rochester school system, and six of my grandchildren will be entering our schools this fall. My children have done well. My grandchildren are exceptional. And all your grandparents know exactly how that works. Over the years, this district has grown and it has evolved. It continues to serve many students really well, but it isn't serving all students really well. We have to ensure that our teaching strategies, our curriculum, and our policies reflect and respect the wonderful diversity of our learners, so that every student has the opportunity and the resources to be successful. Meanwhile, I don't mean to describe the trauma that has been brought by the pandemic. Everyone, including children, has been traumatized, and children have carried that trauma into our schools. Some of the issues our schools are facing now include the physical and mental safety and well-being of our students and staff, unacceptable academic performance and academic disparities, school climate and discipline. The district has worked with community members, staff, and students to develop a strategic plan for dealing with these issues. We'll be talking about those more, hopefully, this evening and in the coming days. The plan is cohesive, intelligent, and I am ready to do everything I can to help make sure that it works. Thank you.
Thank you for your opening statement, and we're starting right away with a rebuttal from Candidate Rashavi.
Okay, so it's interesting to see that it is academic excellence, and everyone's doing so well, when we've already had eight hundred students leave the school district and go to either private or to smaller towns. That means there's a big problem. Things are not okay. And also with the plan, the plan is so everybody feels good. Feelings are great, but academics are way more important. The only way that you're gonna get everyone to do the same thing is to treat everyone equally. That's everybody. I don't care what you look like, what color you are, what gender you are, what race you are. Everybody has the opportunity to excel to their highest potential.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for the rebuttal. I think I'm going to, usually at this point, I would ask a lead woman voters question, but I'm gonna jump to one from the audience, because it's the subject you bring up. And the first candidate to answer is Marvin, then Rashavi, and then Mohammed. The question is, what can be done to increase student enrollment to avoid student transfers to other districts?
That's an excellent question, and it's one that we are absolutely working on right now in our school district. We want to make sure that we have the best programs of any district around. We already have more options for students, including CTEC, PTEC, Alternative Learning Centers. We absolutely want to work on academics, and I hope, Kim, that you heard that I've addressed the fact that our academic performance is struggling, that our disparities are there. But we want to ensure that Rochester schools provide the kind of wonderful, joyful atmosphere that are safe and where children feel that they belong, and we do believe that we'll be bringing kids back.
Thank you, and I have been asked to remind the audience, please don't speak up. We're communicating through cards when their time is up, and we also have the rule that when the end card comes up, you're allowed to finish your sentence, okay? So we don't want to interrupt people, and our experience is our candidates are wonderful when they stop at the appropriate time. So now, to speak to this issue is Candidate Rashavi again.
Okay, so I have seen the plan from the current superintendent, and the plan is more equity specialists, a sense of belonging, and teachers need to understand where students are socially in their families. That has nothing to do with academics. That's for school counselors. Our teachers are not school counselors. We can have resources for that, but when you're in the schoolroom, let's teach academics. Who has time to sit there and have two, three students that are disrupting the whole classroom, and the other ones who are there and want to learn? But the teacher can't do anything about that, because you might be hurting someone's feelings. Again, I don't care what color that person is, I don't care what race or gender they are. Let's treat people like people, and let's get back to academic excellence, and that's how it's gonna work. Teach the academics, reading, writing, arithmetic. I have to stop again.
Thank you. Time does go fast. Candidate Mohammed, same question.
I believe we can offer good to our students. What I believe, I'm a technologist. I have worked one of the largest companies in the world, from Oracle, HP, Intel, you name it. We need to offer technologies up to the point of demand. We're in an era of globalization. Technology advantage, we need to provide technology. We need to partner companies such as Mayo, companies like tech institutes, bring them here, offer those technologies, such as basically technology offerings, science offerings, labs, medicine. We're in a ballpark or court of one of the greatest healing institutions of this country or the world, Mayo Clinic. Take advantage of those learnings, provide those students higher ed, higher technologies, and skip it, and plus, train those teachers, train those teachers to help those students to bridge the gap. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is from the League of Women Voters. Candidate Rashavi goes first, then Candidate Mohammed, and finally Candidate Marvin. And the question is as follows. How does the board move forward effectively in the midst of multiple competing opinions and interests?
How does the board move forward? Well, first of all, there needs to be a lot of common sense, and we need to get rid of such statements as an equity statement and government speech that is the opinion of a few people, but it applies to the whole atmosphere of the school district. That is a hindrance. Let's stop that nonsense. Let's teach reading, let's teach writing, let's teach arithmetic, science. Let's let the kids learn. Outside of the school, you know, do the social things, that's great, but inside the schools, let's teach the kids. Give them an opportunity to develop into the people they can be. Don't hold anyone back.
Thank you. Candidate Mohammed.
I believe it depends the people that elect societies, cities, and it depends those electees, who they elect, who they trust, to make a decision of their family, their kids' education. I believe it's up to the parents to educate them and bring them to the best of their skills of their kids. I believe to develop a parents' academy between the board that oversees the board, the school board, and education, and also within the community and the parental. We need to develop all of those to allow communities to make a cohesive decision about their teaching, about the board's decision-making.
Thank you. Candidate Marvin.
Clearly, there is gonna be differences of opinion politically about how we do things, but if this board, if every board, can get around the idea of focusing on students, adults are gonna continue to fight, but let's focus on students, and our main focus should be equity. This is what equity means in this school district, verbatim. Educational equity means a condition of justice, fairness, and inclusion in systems of education, so that every individual has access to, meaningfully participates in, and has positive outcomes from high-quality learning experiences, regardless of individual characteristics and group memberships. Isn't that what we want for all of our children? Isn't that what each of us wants, is our kids to have the chance to get the quality education they need? That's what we need to focus on.
Thank you. We have another rebuttal. Candidate Rashavi.
I couldn't agree more. The focus definitely needs to be on the students, but that means every student. That doesn't mean that you take certain students and you coddle to them, because they may not have had a good upbringing, or whatever it might be, and the teachers are not, I've heard from teachers, they are not happy. They're not allowed to teach. They're told they can't even mark kids as tardiness. If there's disruption in their classroom, you can't send them to the principal's office, because nobody's in the principal's office, because they're trying to put fires out in the hallway. Why, how is that teaching? Which reflects the academic levels. They're below. Every single high school is below the national level.
Thank you. Thank you. The stuff carries us up. So the next question will come from Jonathan Crowe of the Chamber of Commerce, and the first two, oh, another rebuttal, excuse me, Candidate Marvin.
Yeah, the thing is, kids are different, and if you really want us to treat every child exactly the same, you don't know children, and you don't know learning very well. I mean, how many of you have taught a child to ride a bike? Do you say, well, you get two hours, and if you can't ride it in two hours, I'm done with you? We try to give each child what they need. That is not coddling. That's what good education looks like. We let kids know, we believe in them, and we hang in there with them.
Okay, I'm gonna have a rebuttal from Candidate Mohammed first. That's a closing rebuttal. You have three green ones, and when they're gone, they're gone. So consider that. Candidate Mohammed for a rebuttal.
We have some of the issue that I've seen many years, many times here. That is always blaming teachers, blaming the process, blaming the status quo. The problem is, it is not only teachers. This is the co-ownership of the parental, teachers, and the community that bringing those families and those kids. There is always mechanisms that to change all of this. Teachers are not the only one that creates this issue. There is a parent's responsibility. I believe we should be able to do all of it better.
Thank you, and my superiors have reminded me that the candidates get one rebuttal per question, and I will be enforcing that rule proper. Thank you so much. And now, another question from the Chamber of Commerce, and Jonathan Crowe.
The education and experience that students receive in the district plays an essential role in the development of our community's future workforce. What do you see as opportunities for the Rochester Public School District to support the development of tomorrow's workforce?
And excuse me, Candidate Mohammed speaks first, Marvin second, Rashavi third.
Thank you for the question. We're in the 21st century, and the world is changing. Vast variety of this world is changing. If you can look at it, Singapore, Finland, Denmark, all of these countries improve their technologies and adopt new technologies, adopt their schooling to the school system. What we can do, I believe, is to offer high-end technologies, partnership with the companies that offer high-end technologies, either healthcare, either technologies of IT technologies, developmental technologies, agro-economies, all of these we need. And we need to build that bridge, so we can offer all of these to our students.
Thank you. Next to speak is Candidate Marvin.
It's very important that we prepare our students for the world of work, and we can start doing this, I think, in middle school, by making sure that students know what kind of opportunities are out there. Help them begin to explore what they're passionate about, what they're drawn to, then provide them in high school the opportunities to get hands-on experience in the community at some of those places, with apprenticeships. We have post-secondary courses, which many students take, where they can get college credit or a licensure certificate while they're still in high school. These prepare them for the world of work, and while they're showing up for these courses, they're also understanding about the importance of getting to work on time, of being responsible, of being problem solvers.
Thank you. Candidate Rashavi.
I think it's very important, a lot of things that can be done, which are already, the post-secondary schooling is very important. I think developing shadowing programs for kids to get an idea of what kind of career they might be interested in. Another thing is community career fairs, and another thing is, you know, you could do surveys on seeing what's important for kids, and bringing up surveys. That would be more important, I would believe, than currently the sexual comprehension surveys that are out there, that are very inappropriately given to our children. You may not be aware of that, but that's in the middle school and high schools, and there are very inappropriate questions being asked, such as, have you ever had sex? Such as, did you know you could? And these are supposed to be private, but I do know from a teacher that her son was in a classroom, and the teacher actually handed it all back out to everyone.
Thank you. The next question will come from the Post Bulletin Representative Jordan Sheer.
The school board officially has one employee, which is the superintendent. What do you view as the relationship between the school board and the superintendent, and what would you like that to look like moving forward?
And this goes, I'm sorry, I'll announce this before the question future. Candidate Marvin, the first, Candidate Rashavi, then Candidate Mohammed.
Well, we are so fortunate right now to have what I consider to be one of the finest superintendents probably in the nation. He is working very hard to take this district as far as it can possibly go. The relationship between the school board and the superintendent is critically important, because school board members are the ones who get the phone calls and the emails, who meet with people, who listen to staff, or in the buildings all the time, and they bring that information back to him. They advise him, they problem-solve with him. He uses school board members when he wants feedback on ideas that he has or that the superintendent has. And in addition to evaluating the superintendent, making sure that the goals that that person has for the year are aligned with the district, it can be an it can be an incredibly positive working relationship that makes all of our schools better.
Thank you. Candidate Rashabi.
Well, no doubt, the superintendent is ahead of the whole group. I would hope that there would be a great working relationship with whoever that is. With the current superintendent, I would hope that as I'm running as one of a slate of four and ForYourChildren.org, we do have different ideas that we will be implementing and working, hopefully, with the current superintendent in directions that will actually have academic excellence and a lot of changes that actually are focused on the children and not on all the social things that are going on in the world right now. Politics has got to get out of the schools. People's personal agendas have got to get out of the schools.
Thank you. And finally, candidate Mohammed.
So far, what I'm hearing news about a superintendent, I've read all of his background and CV and look at it, it looks promising. And it acts basically the bridge between the schools and the school board and the community. It's a bridge. That needs to improve. And the past, if you look at it, I don't know how many of you remember this. We have a lot of, we got two school board superintendents gone away. Delamont and the one recently that gone away. And you know where they ended up, all of them. We're not repeating the story again. So my view, it's a bridge and give the opportunity for them to shine. Give what they need, and we come after them if they do not do the good work. Because they work for you. Your needs need to be delivered and needs to be result-based. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will go first to candidate Rashabi, then candidate Mohammed, and then candidate Marvin. It's from the League of Women Voters. Would you support an operating referendum in 2023? Why or why not?
I absolutely would not support a referendum. It is not the community's problem that the current school board is not able to stay within the budget. That, to me, is just ridiculous. Why would we put that on our property taxpayers? They already pay enough. It's a half a billion dollars. It's given out each year. That responsibility is for the current school board. And up to this point, they have failed tremendously at that.
Thank you. And next is candidate Mohammed.
We need to analyze first what we spend. How much do we spend, for a household, for a child? I believe the current data, it shows $926 per student. That's what we spend. And believe me, Rochester, it's the smallest in the state, Wazera being the highest. And adding the taxes, adding the taxes basically and taking a levy, it depends what needs to be done first. We need to go back and revisit first where we're spending all the money. Where there is a chunk that could be removed. Basically, added more values, where areas that can be shrunk. And if there is a referendum, let it be a referendum. But we need to study first where we can remove the chunks first that are not performing. And that needs to be checked completely. And you can't have ten teachers on the same level that has been performing only for the students. So some of those can be merged, can be added together, can be slimmed. Thank you.
Candidate Marvin.
The financial challenges that Rochester is facing are the same ones that virtually every single school district in the state is facing. That's a fact. It's not an excuse. We are underfunded by the state. They have not kept up state funding to inflation. We are underfunded by the federal government. We are required to pay, it's called a cross subsidy, for students in special education. And Rochester has a lot of them. The government promised that it would pay 40% of that cost. They have not paid that. It costs us millions of dollars a year from the general fund to pay for those services the kids desperately need that the federal government's supposed to be paying for. Now, we have a plan. This district will be debt-free, well, it won't be debt-free. We'll have a balanced budget within three years. We will ask the community if they want a referendum or not. If they say no, that's the answer. But I would absolutely support bringing that question to the public.
Thank you. I'm now going to turn to questions from the floor. And this one goes first to candidate Marvin, then candidate Rashabi, and then candidate Mohammed. It's on school safety. As a school board member, how would you address parents' concerns about safety in our schools?
And that is absolutely our number-one concern going forward. We have a robust plan that's in place. It has five pillars. It begins with making sure that buildings are as secure as we can get them. We now have a single entrance point where visitors have to buzz in. We have plans in every building and district-wide in case there is an event. We are looking at, we have a relationship with the Rochester Police Department. We just signed a contract for the next school year with them. We have a program set up so that we can keep track of students who we are worried about in terms of them becoming violent. And we have ways of tracking those kids and staying on top of that. We're giving all children the kind of emotional, mental health training that they need so that they can stay healthy and they can deal with those kids who may not be.
Thank you. Candidate Rashabi.
Well, I look at it as raising your own children. If you allow your kids to get away with whatever behavior that they're doing, and there is no consequences for it. Kids are smart. If you give them an inch, they're going to take a mile. Kids like rules, and kids need consequences. And that's how every child will succeed and will stay safe in the schools. There are no consequences. The teachers aren't allowed to enforce it. The safety officers that are in the schools aren't even allowed to wear a uniform because it might make some people feel afraid. I would think that the only people afraid would be the ones that would probably be disruptive. The schools have to get back to allowing academics to be taught and stop coddling, I will say that word again, because that's exactly what's happening.
Thank you. Candidate Mohammed.
My offer is a, first of all, emergency preparedness, including adaptive protocols and threat prevention and detection. Two, building security through vulnerability assessment, emergency communication tools, and police partnership. Three, community engagement strategies to reduce stakeholder anxiety, mental problems. Mental problems. Parent needs to communicate with the medical side, needs to communicate with the schools, needs to communicate with the counselors, all of those. There is a mental issue is on the rise. Either you accept or reject, it is there. We need to deal with it. We need to deal with it before it goes where it is. We know Texas. Thank you.
Thank you. A rebuttal.
I just wanted to add, I think that the mental issues going on have a lot to do with the decisions that were made by the current school board and current superintendent to close down the schools and not allow children to be children and be social. They're all social. Children had like zero chance of transmitting this COVID. They were not allowed to be in school. They're supposed to sit at home and look at a Zoom. That causes problems. That causes all the problems we're having today. And that's on the current school board.
Rebuttal.
Mental issues does not create going to Zoom studies or going home and studying all of those. Mental issues have been created so many different factors. And those factors, either we accept them as they are or basically place them in a higher ed and taking more precautionary. Allow the parents to report. Parents are not reporting issues with their kids, to the medical or not medical. It is the best way to support it.
Thank you, candidates. The next question is from the floor. It will go first to candidate Mohammed, then candidate Marvin, and then candidate Rashabi. It's on diversity of teaching staff. Minnesota Department of Education shows that RPS has a significantly more diverse student body than average, coupled with substantially less diverse teaching staff than state average. What, if anything, could or should RPS do to increase teacher diversity?
Capability, having teachers that have shared similar backgrounds with their students do help, one way or another. I am one of those students that benefited for those, scholastically, academia level. Opportunity, creating opportunity for a common good for all also helps. Training teachers, providing opportunity for the students in different domiciles, different communities, allowing increased diversity, not hiring only diversity, also retaining. Training those teachers, retaining them, providing opportunity to teach, providing opportunity to excel is what we need. Not only hire and tomorrow they will feel abandoned and walk away again. And then you go back one-on-one again. My feeling is hire those who are capable, whatever background, diversity they come from, and provide them a good solution for it.
Thank you. Candidate Marvin.
Students absolutely do better when they see people who look like them in their classrooms as their teachers. The more different kinds of life experiences and perspectives we can bring into our classrooms, the better and the richer education is going to be. We need to be sure we go to those places where people are anxious to become teachers, to recruit them. And after we recruit them and bring them to Rochester, we really have to support them. We've heard repeatedly that when you're the only black teacher or Hispanic teacher in a building, there's a price that you pay, being only one. So we need more teachers of color. In addition, we have two programs in our district that we're using. One is encouraging paraprofessionals to get their teacher license and supporting them as they do that so that they will become teachers. They already know about kids. And the second is grow your own classes we have in the high school for students who are thinking about becoming teachers.
Thank you. Candidate Rashabi.
Well, I think there's going to be a big need for teachers all around because from many teachers that I've spoken with, they're fed up. They do not get the respect that they deserve from the superintendent or the school board. And they want to be able to teach. And again, why are we talking about color? Why can't someone just be qualified? Why can't it be based on your education and your knowledge and your qualifications? Who cares what color they look like? Who cares their background? If they're qualified, hire that person.
Oh, rebuttal. Thank you.
Who cares? Children care. Our students care. They learn better when they are diverse teachers. When there's a diverse student body, they learn better. They learn more. They learn about relationships. And they are better prepared to go out into the world after school, after they finish school, and be successful. Children care. Ask them.
Thank you. The next question goes first to candidate Rashabi, then to candidate Mohammed, and then to candidate Marvin. Several questions have been submitted regarding critical race theory. How do you define this term? What role does the school board have on this issue?
I didn't know we were able to say CRT. Okay, so we are. It's based on if a certain group of people, of a certain group of color, are not able to keep up with others, then you lower the standards that allows certain outcomes so that everybody's on an equal playing field. That doesn't make any sense to me. Again, why about the color? Why about, it doesn't make any sense. Why can't we have equality? Equality means every single person gets the opportunity to become the best that they can be, no matter what that means for that person. One might excel in math, one might excel in any other area. But why do we have to take standards and apply them and make a certain group of people feel like they're even inferior? I just, I don't understand that.
Thank you. Candidate Mohammed.
We can, we just, we can hope to heal our past or to stung this racist violence from our presence. And if we don't address the problems to its core, we will inherit recent issues and what happens in Buffalo and all of those similar actions to the schools and cities of this country. So what we need is to be able to talk about a systematic failure of racism in the synophobic ways, anti-Asian, anti-black, anti-human being, anti-whatever you call it. But racism is there. We cannot hide from it. It is there. It is there, your own home, our own homes, we live with it. So one way or another, in the hope that future generation will have the tools they need to overcome with those. I believe it is to learn from our past and educate our children for the future so those atrocities that happened in the past cannot go beyond tomorrow, should be left alone.
Thank you. Candidate Marvin.
Critical race theory has been around for 40 years. It's a lens that's used in law schools, and it's a way that they teach some law students how they can view the way laws are made and enforced. I completely agree with Kim that teaching students to be oppressed, or the oppressor or the oppressed, or make a group feel inferior, that is absolutely wrong. It's not critical race theory, but it's absolutely wrong. And that's why we don't do that in Rochester Public Schools. We do use culturally responsive teaching. Unfortunately, same initials, very different thing. And that means that we validate and affirm every student's home culture and language, not just their race, their differences. We accept students for who they are, the story and their background. And we connect students across cultures. We help children see the relevance of education to their presence and their future. That is culturally responsive teaching, and that's what we're all about.
Thank you. The next question goes first to candidate Marvin, then Rashabi, then Mohammed. It's on critical thinking skills. How can the school board ensure that critical thinking skills are evaluated for our students?
Another really good question. A few years ago, the community, the entire Rochester community, told the school board and the school district what they wanted in their high school graduates. They came up with a graduate profile. And one of the values that they really expected, that they really value, is critical thinking. Critical thinking means helping students learn how not just to remember stuff, but to use it, to think deeply about different perspectives, to problem solve, to be innovative, to come up with new answers. But it starts with asking probing questions, not just remembering stuff, but being able to do something with what you know. And we can evaluate that. In fact, I was in a meeting two days ago where we talked about exactly how that can get done. We now have a research professional working with our school district who's also a data expert. And he's got the tool we can use.
Thank you. Candidate Rashabi.
Well, I think critical thinking skills is an awesome idea. It's just not happening currently in our school district because the CRT is getting in the way. It's interesting that the solution to all this is a Wilder Foundation. And they do the research and they ask kids And they do the research and they ask kids how they're feeling or what's going on. And because the solution is they need to belong. So 88% of the kids said, yes, I feel like we belong. But yet that is one of the solutions of the current superintendent to help solve all the problems. So if all the 88% already feel like they belong, I don't think that that is actually helping any situation.
Thank you. Candidate Mohammed.
It takes a time to develop humankind, human being. It takes a time to develop. It takes the stages to prepare them where you want, where you want to be and where you want them to be, students, for example. If I take example of multiplications. Some of those schools, when they young, those children, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third and fourth grade, I remember memorizing all of those up to 12, before I reached the first grade or second grade. And now the kids, the colleges even are offering calculators for one credit hour to memorize, do the, how to use a calculator and how to do a multiplication, some of the courses. My critical thinking is offer the knowledge, skillset, don't limit them. Knowledge is light. Give them opportunity to shine. That's it.
Rebuttal.
Thank you. We seem to have, these are some important questions and an important discussion, I think. But there seems to be this recurring theme that we are, we're coddling kids and that how they feel doesn't matter. Critical thinking, we agree, that's important. But here's the thing, if kids are stressed, if they're feeling like failures, if they're depressed, they can't learn. If they feel that they don't belong, they won't learn. You can't just throw a bunch of facts at kids and say, suck it up. You have to care about the whole child. And this district is committed to working with the whole child. And that includes their emotional well-being.
Thank you. I'm gonna sneak a 10th question in here before we go to closing arguments. And I think the rotation should be Rashavi, Mohammed, and then Marvin. And the question is funding by the state. What are your ideas for advocating for public education funding at the state legislature?
Well, funding at the legis, that's above my pay grade. I'm not exactly sure how that would be done. I'm not on the current school board right now. But I would definitely research and get the knowledge that I would need to understand exactly what that does. I know that every student that we lose is about a $1,300 loss. And currently, we have 800 students that have left the district. Multiply that out, that's quite a hefty figure. If that's, if that's the way it's gonna continue to go, then funding's gonna be a huge problem.
Thank you. Candidate Mohammed.
I believe there is elected officials in this state and this city that offer basically represent our area to the federal level, to the state level. I think those are accountable. We will need to contact first. And population do grow a lot, that we are also required to grow with it, scholastically, academically, in the citywide, and all of those. There is many factors for those. So I believe we need to hold accountable for those elected officials and ask our problems to where we can need a funding for us, schools, cities, and all of those needs. Rest of it, it's provide some of the solutions that attract the more other incentives, whether we can create other incentives, like for example, offering different technological classes, offering different learning classes and opportunities for the others to create some incentive, knowledge, learning for it.
Thank you. Candidate Marvin.
It's maddening that at this point, our state has a substantial surplus that's sitting there. It could do so much good for so many children. Our school board has a legislative committee that has been very active in terms of keeping the rest of the board informed about what's going on in the legislature, in terms of lobbying our representatives, in terms of going up to the Capitol and meeting with officials and telling them what our needs are. They are on top of it. They write letters. We all do. We make phone calls. We have visits with folks. We belong to larger organizations that do the same thing. Our state needs to do a better job of funding our schools, all of our schools.
Thank you. We move to closing remarks. These are two minutes. And the random establishment at the beginning means that candidate Mohammed will speak first, candidate Marvin second, and candidate Rashavi third. Candidate Mohammed.
We are here tonight to ask you votes to do better work and be accountable for your kids' education, for the citywide education, and how do we overcome for those. If I get elected, I will be accountable and to you and to your children, to your families. I would develop a partnership between the Rochester schools and the industry overall, Mayo Clinic being number one, and technological companies that Minnesota being the headquarters for. Bridge the gap between, among the schools of Rochester and incorporate best practices and other schools in the state. Develop parent academy program to engage, empower parents as partners for their children's education. And allow them stakeholder, being in a stakeholder, not a decision-making that coming from somewhere else. Be the owner of those decisions, part of the owners of those decisions in the making that affects their children. I would welcome each one of you to bring your voices forward, to bring your knowledge, whatever that you can share, whatever we can add a value for it. My take is it takes this city to raise the child, single child. It takes the city. So the Rochester could be that city that raises more than one child. That could represent this city, this community, to the global world. The stage is change. We are in a stage of globalization. You can be here and work, London, Ukraine, you name it, anywhere you want. But those days are changing. Welcome, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you. The next candidate to speak is candidate Marvin.
A great education should be joyful and empower students, all students, to know they have value. They have choices. They have the ability to create their own future and to be empowered contributors to society. They have a purpose. In fact, our district's strategic plan is absolutely student-focused and is named Planning for Purpose. During kindergarten to 12th grade, students spend 15% of their time in school. How they spend the rest of their time is determined by their parents or by themselves. And they have access to all kinds of input from all kinds of sources. Some of the information they get is accurate, some of it is not. So when they're in school, teachers provide an age-appropriate, fact-based, inclusive curriculum. One writer put it this way, "An honest understanding of the past helps to create a better future." When educators teach the truth, students see themselves as part of a bigger story. It helps them believe in a more inclusive, just future. And the student said this, "What's the problem with teaching the story of everybody? It's not about blaming someone. It's about understanding each other." When our students encounter a new perspective, whether it's in school or out, they need the opportunity to explore and discuss it with others, including their families, and decide whether to accept it or not. That's what critical thinkers do. They can engage an idea without accepting it. I hope all of us will take the opportunity to talk with students and ask them about what they value in education and what their actual experience is. They have a lot to say. It's worth listening. And I would be happy to listen to you if you want to give me a phone call or to check out my website, which is gmharvinforschoolboard.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Rashavi.
Okay, I would just like to reiterate that the top three issues that I feel are very important are the academics. Where they stand right now, at below the national level for the public high schools, is unacceptable. And teachers are expected to be behavioral specialists. That there's no room for teaching. Having disruption in the classroom that there's no consequences for, they can't teach. The other thing, and goes hand in hand, is the violence in the classrooms and in the hallways. It's unacceptable. I don't understand why there hasn't been something more done about that. These children should not be afraid to go to school. We should not have over 800 kids leaving the public school system. Public needs for everybody. But there's so many that are not getting what they are looking for. The other thing is the current superintendent, his solution is everyone needs to feel like they belong and we need to have social intervention. That's great. That does not solve the academics. That does not solve the violence. And also with the $23 million deficit, that's unacceptable. My opponent, Mrs. Marvin, has been in education since before I started kindergarten. And the amount, that's true. And the amount of time that she has been on the school board, this is what's been happening. All these things have been happening and it's not getting better. And they own it all. The current school board owns it all.
Thank you. We have a rebuttal from candidate Marvin.
Yeah, let me remind you, 15% of a child's time is in school. 15%. Other 85% families, you got this. I absolutely agree with others that our academic performance is below what it should be. That safety is utmost importance. And the superintendent met with every single secondary principal right after school got out. Every building has a plan for next fall to make schools safer, to make discipline better, and to make kids feel that they do belong.
Rebuttal. Kimberly Rashavi.
This study is already out on the belonging, the Wilder Foundation, which was done for the school district. 88% of the kids feel that they do belong. It's not helping. That has nothing to do with curbing the violence. But anyway, I am Kim Rashavi, one of the four, the slate of four. And it's the number four, yourchildren.org. And I look forward to your vote, as do the other three that are in the primary, Alina Nihoff and Ray Parker. And we really do want to make a difference for our children.
Closing rebuttal. Candidate Mohammed.
It looks like a message that keeps coming back. It repeats itself one way or another. Keep coming back. Who it does, who, who work, who. It is the interest of your families and your kids. You are the judges. Vote what is the best for your kids. Vote what is the best future that you want your kids to be. Next years, 10 years, 20 years from there. So what I can say to you, choice is yours. Elect those who could represent your families, those who represent your kids. Thank you.
And now it's my privilege to thank each of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind you that the views expressed in the forum tonight were those of the candidates, not those of LWP Rochester or any partner or sponsor of the forum. Thank you all for coming tonight. I'm supposed to mention, primary election day is August 9th. Early voting has started. If you have voted by absentee ballot and would like to change your ballot based on what you learned tonight, visit minvotes.org for more. If you need more information on who's running, ballots, where to go, go to the Secretary of State's website or vote411.org, which is the league site. And now you get to applaud. And I have to tell you, you have to leave by 7:45 live pool. So thanks for coming.